PM, and so we'll go ahead and get started. Please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So first on the agenda, we have recognition of the 2023 Girls Indoor Track Class A State Champions. Superintendent Tager.
Thank you Chair Austin. The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize the Class A Girls Indoor Track State Champions. Coach Moska, if you would come up, I just want to say a couple of words and then have you take over. First of all, congratulations to you and your team and the families. And I want to use the word family. You really have a family atmosphere and I appreciate all the positive things that you do. And I know it takes everybody, so the athletes and the families too. I have seen so many of you at events, so thank you for supporting our student athletes. Also want to say it's a testament to resilience. When you could say that you had a three-peat to win three times in a row, that's something as an athlete or a coach that nobody can ever take from you. So enjoy every second of it. Please know that we're all proud of you. I'd last ask you to speak a little bit, then we'll have the school committee come up and shake some hands and we'll bring Coach, Principal Butler up as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tager. Thank you, Mr. Tager, school committee members for recognizing us here tonight as we celebrate our 2023 Class A Indoor State Championship. It's always a pleasure to see all of you, as this usually means we want something big, so it's nice to be here. I would like to start tonight with a quote from legendary NBA coach Phil Jackson. "The strength of the team is each individual member. The strength of each member is the team." I saw that quote and I instantly thought of this group. Our team has many strengths. We're fast, we're strong, we're athletic, we have great endurance for our distance races. As a result, our girls program has gone undefeated for three consecutive seasons. During the season, we broke multiple school, league, fieldhouse, and state records. Our third consecutive state championship, or as Mr. Tager mentioned, a three-peat, is a product of all of our incredible talent and drive to be great. But that's only one part of the equation. I think of the other part of Coach Jackson's quote. "The strength of each member is the team. This team competed together and for each other. We were able to overcome many obstacles, such as losing our first two meets to weather. We never got frustrated. We just kept training together as a team. We got the best from our opponents week after week. We never got intimidated. We just kept competing together as a team." At the state meet, we faced a very tough and determined Scarborough team. They were one of the best state meets I have ever seen in my 20 years of coaching track. We never lost our composure, we believed in each other, and because of that, we won a state championship together as a team. Our secret is not only all of our talent, but it's our ability to give our best for each and every team member. Simply, we do not let each other down. These athletes have a special bond, and it's so enjoyable to watch this group interact with each other, to watch them foam roll and laugh after every practice, to witness our athletes cheer each other on during meets and train together with a purpose, to see everyone care for each other during meets, practices, bus rides, team meetings, and in the hallways at Bangor High School. Bangor is very proud of you, as you have demonstrated how to be a champion on and off the track. This group of athletes truly shows what's how great it is to high school sports and what it represents. We join a very select and special group of teams, as we are one of only four teams to ever three-peat in the history of Class A indoor track. This historical run is because of the culture that you have all created. Everyone here is so proud of you and all that you have accomplished. But what is so special is how all of you bring out the best in everyone, day in and day out, and that is truly the mark of a champion. Congratulations, you are truly a record-setting team. Thank you. So what we'll do now is, we will, I will, I have your certificates. You will come up. A few of our athletes are not here tonight because they have other arrangements. So the first one that I listed off is Abby McDonald, but she is not here tonight. Our second athlete will come up, come to me, and then work our way down the line will be Lorraine Ty. Samantha Herb. Not in attendance, but a team member, Madison Tripp. Not in attendance, but a team member, Nora Mrazco. Annika Noaf. Sadie Harrow. Julia Bassi. Team member, not in attendance, Taylor King. Evelyn Humbert. Anna Connors. Team member, but not here, Maddie Seer. Team member, but not here, Emma Syfers. Allison St. Pierre. Sophia Mazarelli. Team member, not here, Katie McCarthy. Team member, not here, Hannah Williams. Callie Tennant. Madeline Todd. Team member, not here, Olivia Mitchell. Jenna Elkhart. Brooklyn Schmerzle. Team member, not here, Madison McLean. Team member, not here, Ava Pelkey. Sophia Chase. I'm a little biased on this part, but I think the greatest coaching staff in the state. I cannot do, we cannot, this can't happen without our coaches. They are truly all professionals, pro-kid, and I am so grateful for all their work. So thank you very much, coaches. Our first coach is John Holyoke. Our second coach, Lindsey Hackett. Garrett Johnson. Peterson. Coach Huber. One of our coaches is not here tonight. He's a lawyer, he's an attorney, he's at a meeting for a dam, so he's at a dam meeting, and that's Roger Huber.
Carolyn and Sue, can you actually change places? Sue's a little bit shorter. That's perfect. That is perfect. Everyone say, "Go Rams."
Go Rams!
Take a couple, just to make sure there's no sprinkling eyes. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll resume. Superintendent Tager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Okay, perfect. And for public comments, as a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do we have any public comments tonight? Or any on Zoom? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have no action items, but we have several informational items. The first one is the James F. Dowdy Time Capsule. Superintendent Tager.
Thank you Chair. James F. Dowdy teacher Stephen Rotano and Judy Mahalik will share their time capsule and proposal and historical reference for the James F. Dowdy School, previously known as Fifth Street Middle School. Come on up.
Got quite the crowd here, so share with us. All right, well, thank you Superintendent Tager and good evening, everybody, and members of the board for allowing us a chance to speak tonight. I do want to start, I'll just give IP a moment to get our presentation up. Thank you. Okay, so, here we are. Yes, thank you so much. So this is a very complex hunt for a time capsule, and as you will hear from both our current students, former student, community members, and colleagues, this is a very powerful event and something that is going to create a lasting legacy, we hope, for the students of Bangor and the students of the James F. Dowdy School. So I'd like to start and just share with you that as Bangor, we sort of have an obsession with time capsules. So in 2034, for Bangor's 200th anniversary, the city of Bangor here, wherever the vault is, apparently there's a vault here in City Hall, which I didn't know about, there's a box that has been laid to rest in there, I guess, in 2009, and it has all kinds of materials that's to be opened in 2034 for Bangor's 200th anniversary. And then if you also didn't know, at the base of the Paul Bunyan statue, there's also a time capsule, which the Paul Bunyan statue was dedicated on Bangor's 150th anniversary. And when Bangor turns 250 in 2084, that time capsule is supposed to be opened. So just a little bit of history there, which brings us to the history around this time capsule. So I was not around in 1986, I was not even thought of yet, so I do not remember any of these events that I'm going to talk to you about, but I'm sure some of you may. In 1986, in January, some of you may remember, or even if you weren't around, you hopefully know about the Challenger that exploded on live TV, unfortunately killing all seven crew members, one of them a teacher from New Hampshire. So that tragedy was witnessed on television by many students and many people across the country. Students at the then Fifth Street Middle School witnessed that tragedy as well. And about four months later, the Chernobyl disaster occurred as well. And so 1986 was a sort of a watershed year in many ways, as it relates to historical events. So from this, this was sort of the impetus behind burying the capsule that you see here and in the packet that has been provided for you. You can see the photos. And we have Bangor High School, current Bangor High School teacher Rob Spring, but also former Fifth Street Warrior who was here the day that the time capsule was buried to provide us a little bit of background as to why students chose to bury this. But the whole purpose here, as Rob, I'm sure, will communicate to you, this was to create a legacy for the students of Fifth Street Middle School, but also show students 25 years in the future, sort of how they lived their lives. And I'm sure Rob can tell you all the neat things that they put into this PVC pipe. So back at this time, we were all 12, 13, 14 years old, and all these huge, you know, international events were happening. So we were, you know, it was on an educational level, it was really this tremendous effort to, for, you know, middle school kids to put these things into perspective and what we wanted to communicate to people 25 years down the road, which at the time, I mean, that was double how long we had been alive. So we couldn't fathom that length of time. So we thought, you know, we would have flying cars and hoverboards and, so we had no idea what to expect. So we wanted to try to encapsulate what it was like to be a middle school student in 1986, so that in 2011, they could get some perspective, which is really a pretty impressive task for a 13-year-old, a group of 13-year-olds to do. And Mr. Glick led the charge, and he was an amazing teacher, and we were all on board. The buzz in our classes at the time, talking about it, it was a daily thing. We talked about what we wanted to add to it. And so it was just very exciting, and so this would be, really bring a nice closure to this whole project. I remember back in 2011, there were classmates that asked about it and nobody really knew. So I really appreciate that Mr. Rotano's taking this on to try to, try to find it and see what's in there and see if anything is still salvageable to, you know, get a perspective on what we were like in 1986. And as Mr. Spring had mentioned, the stories that my colleagues and our students will talk to you about, it's just been amazing to hear what students' middle school experience was like, you know, at this time now, 36 years ago. But it's been so moving as a teacher to see the history behind this of what has stayed true at our school, that staff show up every day dedicated for kids, and that we really work hard to make a really holistic school experience for our students. So before I turn things over, I just want to show you a comparison of the photographs here that a community member who will introduce herself to you in just a moment has painstakingly worked through and found for us. And you can see here, an aerial photo from 1986, and then an aerial photo from 1988. And this is the current layout, or well, the then layout, I guess, of Fifth Street Middle School. And we've gone through some updates. In 1988, Bangor School Department approved a project to add to the middle schools, both Cohen Garland Street at the time and Fifth Street. And so what you see here is not what remains. And that is what has made this such an effort to try to locate where that yellow circle that you see on the right-hand photo, that is actually the time capsule and also the stone that you see this young man holding there. So I'm going to turn things over to Judy Mahalik and Kendra Byrd, who are going to talk to you about their efforts and their relation to the project.
That's a lot of very tiny words.
Yes. All right. So I just wanted to kind of bridge where we were from that article to where we are right now for you. It's been quite a journey. We have an amazing community. What happened is, when you saw that Bangor Daily News article, we couldn't see much detail in that. And over the winter break, I was working, I'm a local photographer, and I was working on just doing some colorizing mold pictures, and I posted a couple online, and Steven said, "Hey, can you take that Bangor Daily News picture and colorize it and see if we can get any clues?" And lo and behold, we did. We realized that where we first thought the time capsule was located would have been way too close to where it actually was, because of the distance between the cars that we couldn't see in the background, and then the trees. And so that one little clue has led to a plethora of clues. And I ended up posting in a couple of Facebook groups to colorize pictures and said, "Hey, if anyone else has any information, has any pictures, we'd love to have it, because we think we can find this." And that led to Kendra Byrd, who is in our community and has an amazing amount of knowledge in this area, sort of chiming in, as well as several other groups, Bangor Public Library, the Bangor Historical Society, they've all become involved in this, and it has just become almost overwhelming how much community support and love we've had for this project. So I'm going to turn it over to Kendra right now and let you speak about some of the things that you noticed when we were doing this.
Great. So you guys all know Judy and Steven, probably. You don't, the microphone, oh, it's so fancy. All right. Not used to speaking into one of these. You probably don't know me. My name is Kendra Byrd. I'm a faculty member in computer technology at Eastern Maine Community College and digital curation at the University of Maine. But I'm not just some rando who thought this was a cool project. I am also an alum of Fifth Street Middle School, class of 1996, and Bangor High School, class of 2000. So I'm local, this is relevant to me. I stumbled upon Judy's image in the Facebook group. I grew up in that neighborhood, obviously, since I went to Fifth Street. And a lot of my academic background involves archaeology, geographic information systems, working with spatial data sets, and reconstructing locations and activities that occurred using limited data. Well, limited data is pretty much what we have for this project, because we reached out to the BDM, we found the original negatives, the original photos from the session are long gone, because, you know, we're hoping maybe some additional photos are available that we can look at different angles. That's not the case. So I ended up leaning on a colleague, Paul Smitherson, at Special Collections at Fogler Library. I worked at Fogler for a few years, and during that time, we came into possession of the Sewell Aerials Collection, very little of which has been digitized and released to the public as of yet. But I got to go through the database and locate some potential aerial photo sets that would correspond to the dates we wanted to look at. Those specific ones were a 1988, April 1988 aerial data set taken from only 4,000 feet above, so the resolution is just outstanding. And that would be just about two years post-time capsule burial, less than two years, and then one from April of 1986, so just a couple months before the time capsule was buried. We knew that the trees were in certain positions. Steven unearthed an awesome plan that had not just the trees marked on it, but even the types of trees they were, hardwoods, softwoods. We were able to, you know, identify the styles of trees and map all of this out. So long story short, we found what we believe to be the time capsule marker, that circular feature. And I geo-referenced the image using a process that I won't go into, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and found out that it appears that the time capsule is located down the fence line about 16 meters from the current steps on the softball field.
So this side, which you have references, is just some of the quotes we've already sort of gone over and what happened. One thing I have to say before the students come up is we met with Mr. Glook on Martin Luther King Junior Day, the day that we had off, we all came in and we met, we zoomed with a couple of former students as well, just to hear their stories, to see if we could find any more information. And one thing he said, Isaiah was there, he looked at Isaiah and he said, you know, "This is what we were hoping for. We were hoping to leave some sort of legacy, we were hoping to excite the future, and it's such a good feeling to know that we have." And so that really touched me as a teacher. So this has been so important to people, and it has affected our future students. So they're going to come up right now and speak a little bit about what we're hoping to do in the future, as far as airing our own time capsule. And so we have Isaiah. Do you want to introduce yourselves, everyone?
I'm Isaiah Shear. I just happened to come upon, there was an announcement that we were doing a time capsule, and I was like, "Oh, that's an interesting thing to do." So I just got kind of swept into all this, so, yep.
My name is Eddie Gray, and I joined the time capsule group because it's interesting, it's really cool.
My name is Hayden Villarreal. I joined the time capsule meeting thinking it'd be a fun after-school activity to do, and now we're here.
Okay, so the first thing is, okay, so there's a photo here of, this is Mr. Rotano's room, a whiteboard, and that's what we did in the first meeting. We were just kind of brainstorming what we wanted to do with the time capsule, what the purpose of it was, what we wanted to put in it, just ideas. And from there, it just grew and grew. Unfortunately, some of the students didn't end up showing up for the later meetings. So there's a couple more of us that didn't come here, but this is kind of the core group that has stayed with us the entire time, so.
Like he said, there were many who had just kind of disappeared after a few meetings. But we have stayed strong, we've stayed here, and we have established that we want to do this. We want to, like you have said, establish a legacy. In the future, we want to show how we survive things like the coronavirus and the Suez Canal. That wasn't much of a dangerous thing, but it's still pretty bad.
So these are some of the things the students said. We didn't know what we were going to get with this. And I'll just put this down there.
So we didn't know we were going to get this far. This project grew incredibly, and we were able to gain a lot of resources that we didn't know we were able to, that we were going to be able to get.
No, it's Isaiah, oops.
You want to transition to what we're going to put in?
I'll just, I guess I can quickly go through this. So like they said, we slowly learned more hints of where the time capsule was located, and now we know, we think we know where it is. So, I mean, yeah, so, and the third point, it was definitely interesting to see what the story was headed next. Like, we had no idea if we were going to be able to find it, we had no idea what was going to happen. So it was very fun just looking how everything progressed. And the community, it was very nice to see everyone come together for the same goal, same, like, everyone had the same, okay, I don't really, I can't think of another way to put that, but it was very nice. And I met a lot of people, Miss Byrd, and yeah, I also met fellow students, so. And then the students that were involved with burying it, they really wanted to find the, get the time capsule dug up, and, because, I mean, you can't blame them. It's like completing a circle. They buried it, and the other side of the circles, we have to dig it up and see if there's anything that's actually salvageable. Okay, so this is, so there's a list here of what we plan on putting in to the new one, if it'll stop being licky.
All right, so. So the first thing we would like to put in there is maybe the prices of current items to see if maybe they'll be different in the future. Will they be more expensive? Will they be cheaper? Will housing costs be like, will they be expensive, cheaper, you know? And then the next thing we wanted to do was bull mask, bull dog mask, to not only show our legacy of our James to not only show our legacy of our James F. Doughty School, but the coronavirus, that was a pretty big thing that happened. And we survived that, you know, half of this, what we're doing is to show how we managed. And how their first time capsule too, that would have shown how they managed through all the tragedies like Chernobyl and whatnot. And we also want to put a yearbook, of course, to show what we've done in this school. You know, all the cool things. Like, we just recently had an invention convention, that was later today or earlier. We'll have a Twinkie because it's good, it's tasty. And we also want to find out if it's true that they really can last forever. Questions for the future, we want to know like what it's like to be in the future. Maybe there'll be some students who are like, who worked on this capsule, who will be in their future. And they'll be like, they'll have the questions already answered because they're in the future now. That would be great, like. And we'll have a digital website hunt. I think that would be cool. Like, instead of just putting papers in there, it'd be much better to just put like a USB in there and do a digital website hunt. Paper can get wet and soggy in the time capsule machine. We have no idea if the stuff in the original time capsule machine is still salvageable. We hope it is, but it may not be, possibly because it's just paper. That was a USB, you can plug it into a computer and it's still salvageable. Writings, I personally really like writings. And I know a lot of the students in James F. Doughty do love expressing their ideas into writings. So it'd be great to have some writings in there, not just on paper, but like USB, because more salvageable. Love candies because they taste good, like the Twinkie. We'll have a future map showing what our school was like today. So our school, back then, it went through a lot of changes, the years with the time capsule. And we'll ask that, we'll ask a question, like maybe, what does your school look like now? And it could be like 10 times bigger, it could be an entire new place, it could turn into a factory in the future, we don't know. But that map will show what it was like during this year, like those maps do back with the Warriors. Anything else? Yep. We'll have a newspaper, bulldog newspaper, showing all the kind of events we've had throughout the years, what we've done, like the fun nights. We'll definitely have those in the newspapers. And that's it.
So the new time capsule will be a way to bring our community and school together. Like the original Warriors, we will hopefully be able to reconnect and remember this time in our lives.
So we want to give some thank yous, first of all, to you all for hearing us tonight. We'd like to thank Mr. Finney, the Communications Director. I called you the second I first found out about this back in November, so thank you. Superintendent Tager, Assistant Superintendent Kathy Harris Smedberg, and also interim Principal Mooreing here at the Doughty School. Without your support, we would not be where we are, so we really appreciate it. And we hope to update you in the future as to where we plan to go with this. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That was simply amazing. Any questions, comments from the committee? No, that was wonderful and we look forward to following up for years to come. Thank you. And thank you to the students, excellent, well done. Okay, so back to business. Next, we have the introduction to the 2023-2024 budget. Superintendent Tager.
Business Director Joey Hayman will introduce the 2023-2024 school budget. Good evening. I play, I won't be too long. So he gives it to me and he doesn't tell me how to do it, it's good, should work out well. Fidendo.
Right and left on the arrow keys.
Thank you, sir. I told him the funding depended on it. So I want to start off by apologizing for getting the draft package out a little bit late. Usually would have had that to you on a Friday with the rest of the materials. But we did it as quick as we could and hopefully you've had time to look it over, it's a lot of material. It is a draft budget, a true draft budget, meaning about 20 administrators took their individual divisions, presented it to me and I consolidated it. And that's what you're looking at tonight. So there hasn't been any massaging or refinements to it. Simply a compilation of what they've submitted, so. Alright, so on page one, we always start off by comparing the city of Bangor to the state. And we have to look a year back, so this starts off by looking at fiscal '22. And it looks at the different categories that the state of Maine concentrates on, from regular education to special education, all the way through to transportation, debt service, et cetera. And compares the two, and then you can see clearly that the city of Bangor spends more on regular education and special education than the state average. And that's been true for a while. Underneath that is the tuition rates set by the state of Maine. And the secondary rate is spot on with the state and the elementary rate is a little bit cheaper than the state of Maine. So that's what's going on there. On page two, for those who are visual, the '22 data comparing Bangor to the state of Maine is a sideways biograph that you can see clearly in the blue, the city of Bangor outspends the average in the instructional categories. And please stop at any time. Page three, I want to spend a moment on that, that's very important. Page three is the revenue. That basically tells the story, how are we going to pay for things? Off to, I want to point off, off to the very right of that page, there's very small numbers, 1 through 21. And they corresponded to the next page on page four, which are definitions. So if you wondered what in the world is going on in particular revenue, you have a nice little short definition shown on page four. So let's start at the top. It's the required local appropriation. And the state of Maine takes all of our data and everybody's data and cranks it through, looks at all of it and says at the end, this is what you need to do at a very minimum to educate your children. So as you can see, they're saying for the coming year, the city of Bangor needs to spend $20,214,000. And that's an increase of $1.2 million over the previous year. That's not something we came up with, that's what the city of Bangor, the state of Maine is saying. The next line, line two, our budget is usually more robust than the bare minimums, so we always spend more than the minimum required. And that's what that is, so it's the local appropriation above required. And currently, that's at $8.5 million and it's up $1.9 million over the previous year. So in total, and this is the key for the taxpayers, that section is totaling $28,745,000, that's up over $3.1 million. That's what we would be asking the citizens of Bangor to fund in addition to what they already are for our schools, if we go with the budget as it's presented tonight. The good news is on line three, the state of Maine appropriation. We were lucky enough to receive an additional $884,000 over the previous year, which is a very nice number. I've seen some bigger, but I've seen some much smaller. So we're very happy with that number. So the total for the state to fund our education, according to them, they have $24,965,000. The bottom sections, I didn't adjust too much, just a few up or down slightly, they don't change a lot. Year to year, there's tuition paid by students attending the Bangor School Department. There's athletics, some rentals, some smaller revenue line items. They totaled $2.19 million, barely changed from the previous year by $38,000. So the bottom line, oh, I skipped a line there. The balance from previous year, that 1.25 million, we always have that in there. And that's what we're using out of our own fund balance to fund our budget every year. We take it out, basically it's prior year reserves, and we dedicate it to our school budget. So now to the bottom line. The bottom line, as proposed tonight, is $57,152,000. It's up in total $4,780,000. That's an increase of 7.7%. That's a healthy increase. Out of that $4,780,000, like I previously stated, 3.1 of it would have to be a tax increase and 884,000 would be offset by the state appropriation. So everybody, I said that quickly, but is everybody clear on that? That's sort of how we pay for everything. And I should be advancing this, shouldn't I? I'm doing too many things at once. Alright, so now I'm caught up. So now we get into how we're budgeting to spend the money. And this is a biograph, we're going to get into the actual numbers on the next page. But the line share is always consumed by regular education, regular instruction and special education. This year, facilities maintenance, the state category has taken a significant jump. And that's all about the increase in utilities this year. That's where all the utilities for the school system, electricity and natural gas are. So we'll get into those numbers, but those are significant increases. The other ones are smaller in nature and we'll get into each one of those in the coming pages. So page six. This is the expenses, the biographs basically turned into numbers. The fiscal '24 proposed column is the third from the right. And that shows the total for $57,152,000 again. And it takes you through the, you want to know where the spending increase occurred, for a million dollars. If you look at regular instruction, that increased $1.3 million. Special education, $849,000. I'll speak to some of the other larger ones. Students' staff support, $276,000. Facilities maintenance, as I alluded to earlier, $1.3 million. And debt service, $200,000. The other ones are pretty small, just minor fluctuations, but you can see the changes there. The, in your packet but not in the screen, are the definitions for each one of those. So if you're wondering the state definition, what's in the state categories on page seven and eight of your packet, it starts with regular instruction and goes all the way through and ends in all other expenses. And it tells you exactly what the state, how they categorize things. We don't have a choice on how we put it all together, they're very, very strict, they want everybody to do it the same way. So they can have nice comparative numbers from Rooster County to York County. So now we'll look at the categories fairly quickly, but one at a time. Starting with regular instruction. Regular instruction has K through two instructions, other instructional programs, alternative education. English is a second language and it's probably called something different now, multiple language or something, I don't know, changes every minute. And gifted and talented. On the next page are the numbers. So we have the '23 budget and the proposed '24 budget side by side. So you can see the increase, just in regular instruction. And you can see the increases in salaries and benefits. Those are the two driving forces within regular instruction. And I'll start off by saying, you're going to hear a recurring theme all night long. It's going to be salaries, it's going to be utilities, it's going to be debt service. And they really drive most of the increase. And I'll summarize those in the end. So once again, you can see the total increase for regular education at $1.3 million. The other line items that the state looks at are fairly minor in nature. But I'm welcome to talk about those as well. The next is special education, it's just like it sounds. Special education has a unique position to be its own state category. And then we look at the expenses as divisions, it's its own division, and they're exact same thing. So it has the education component and the administration part of special education. So on page 12 is the, once again, the '23 and the '24 side by side, the increases, again, $849,000. And again, the biggest increases are salary and benefits. And there's another one, it's tuition to regional programs. That's when we send our students to another location because of special needs that we don't have, but they do. So that's why that's going up $130,000. Alright, other instruction, which is co-curricular, extra-curricular, other instruction, summer programs, and post-secondary enrollment. The numbers are somewhat smaller here. The budget for that in fiscal '24 is supposed to be almost $1.5 million, a modest increase of $47,000. Just some, once again, some modest increases in salary and benefits. Nothing as big as the first two. Students' staff support, that's where guidance, library and health services reside. Instructional technology, student support services, student assessment, improvement of education, instructional staff training and other staff support services. The proposed total for that category is $5.1 million. It's an increase of $276,000. And once again, the driving force is salaries. The other are very minor changes up or down, a few thousand up or down. System administration. So it obviously has the system administration, the superintendent's office, the business office, and a portion of the assistant superintendent's office. The proposed budget for next year is $1.25 million. The proposed budget for next year is one point five million dollars. And the total increase in all those categories is twelve thousand dollars. So it's very, very minor compared to some of the others. Now we're on to school administration. So that's where you have the principals, the assistant principals, and things of that nature. The proposed budget for the twenty-four years, two point seven seven million. It's actually a decrease of forty-seven thousand dollars. So they've worked really hard to keep those numbers in check. So I consider that great news from a budget standpoint. And transportation. And it's a bus and vans that we contract out for each year. I budgeted in a five percent increase, and I went back and reviewed the contract, and it's actually full. So I could easily take twenty thousand under there and be right on with the contract. And the next one's facilities management. That's the operation maintenance of fiscal plant, capital improvements, and then renew renovations. And if we look at the numbers, you'll clearly, if I can turn my page, you'll clearly see the biggest number in there is the utilities and the minor capital. And I'll take both of those separate. Utilities, our natural gas contract expired on December thirty-first, which is unfortunate time to have a contract expire, especially in today's environment. I work with the, we have an energy broker that takes our usage and goes out to bid. Unfortunately, with the unlimited, well, there isn't a pipeline in Maine unless it comes from Canada, stops in Massachusetts. So the bidding is quite limited. We got the best price we could. We talked back and forth. We thought prudent to do a two-year contract, hoping the world would become a little more settled, if you will, in two years. And the prices hopefully would come back to maybe not what they were, but better than they are right now. So the price for the, for each term of natural gas went from eight point, eight dollars and sixty cents to nineteen dollars and sixty cents. That's a big jump. So we need to pray for a win, winners, I guess. The electricity, you've, I'm sure your, all your electric bills have taken a turn for the worst lately. So we budgeted a thirty percent increase in that area as well. And on the minor capital, the increase there, what I'm trying to do there is put some dollars away. We're currently doing a STEM room renovations at Bangor High, specifically a little bit in the junior highs. And there's certain pieces of that that are not allowed under our grants. And we'll have to, for instance, chairs, desks, some cabinetry, things of that nature, we'll have to fund out of our operating budget. So I was hoping to put some money in so we could take care of some of those furnishings in the coming year. Or it's going to be a two-year project. What I'm experiencing with a lot of my projects is the vendor that are not available to do it. And if they are, their dance card, if you will, for the summer is full, and they'd love to bid on it, but they want to bid on it for the summer of twenty-four. And in this case, for the STEM, we're going to get some of the work done in the summer of twenty-three, but some of the air HVAC improvements won't be done until the summer of twenty-four. But we can, we're going to also take care of the asbestos tile problem in that area of the B wing of Bangor High. And hopefully, we can keep some of these dollars in here and do some furnishing as well. So that's what that one's all about. Debt service. I've come before you many times over the last three years and talked about debts and projects. Since I've come on board, we've done Cameron Stadium, done a complete heating system at Vine Street, big chunk of Bangor roof, electrical system upgrade at Bangor High, generator at Bangor High. This summer, we're doing the full heating system at Fruit Street. So we've done our share of bonding, if you will. And with bonding comes debt service. So what this is, is an increase of two hundred thousand dollars is I'm solely, over the last few years, cranking up the budget to anticipate the debt service coming onboard. So that's simply what we have to do to fund these projects. The pay down on existing debt is about seventy-six thousand dollars a year. So there's a slow pay down, which is nice, but it's not fast enough. It will take a while. The big change in debt service won't occur until two thousand twenty-nine, is when a significant piece of old debt will be paid off, and the debt service will really come down a little bit. So that's why that's going up. It's not really a nice to have, it's a really need to have. All right, we're on to all other expended expenses and the school lunch program. And that's, we modestly support the school lunch program, which ninety percent of it runs on its own, is its own enterprise. But we do fund a little bit from the operating fund. And then we have school nutrition, and there's a few other community service and non-public school services. Those numbers are quite small, as you can see, one hundred and fourteen thousand, and they barely move the needle with an increase of just twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's a complete look at how the state looks at the expenses and how we have to present it to them quarterly, yearly, and how it has to be audited. But we also take, take a look at, and every month, we present to you the same expenses, but by division. And that's on page twenty-nine. So that starts off with the school committee and runs all the way through debt service again, with the, all the schools in the middle, with the technology and people's services and special ed is back. So this is total expenses again at fifty-seven million one hundred and fifty-two thousand, increase of four million dollars. And there's our seven point seven percent again. So if you look at which division is sort of spending more money than last year, you can really see it clearly in the increased-decreased column. And special education, in my notes, I think I got it a little bit wrong, but a little bit right. What I should have said is the number of special education students the year we're in. And next year, we'll go one hundred and eighty children, one hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty children. I said a hundred. So over two years, it's a hundred and sixty students. That's a, that's a significant growth. And with it comes significant price increases, needing more classes, more at-techs, more teachers, et cetera. Bangor High is in there. Once again, it's the salaries, but it's also utilities. And it's also the money I put in for the STEM rooms in two places. I put it into minor capital, and I put it into purchase service, hoping to have enough. And maybe it turns out we need to do the furnishings over more than one year, but I'm, I'm trying to do it in one year. So, and each school, it's a, if you look at the, my notes on page thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, it's the same sentence over and over again. It's salaries, it's utilities. So that, I think utilities overall, between electricity and natural gas, went up about eight hundred thousand dollars, and debt service went up two hundred thousand. So just utilities and debt service, the increase is a million out of the four million that you see. So, and the rest of it is staff and benefits. And with benefits, we had to take educated guess. The insurance companies will get back to us in about a month, which is probably a little too late. So we put in ten percent on health insurance, ten percent on dental. With ten percent on health insurance, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars. So that, that's a significant jump. So if you put eight hundred thousand in the budget anticipating ten percent, that's kind of a, hopefully a worst-case scenario. Last year, it came in at a little over four percent. So let's, let's hope that. And if that's the case, we'll be able to do some changes in our budget. But right now, I wanted to not put four percent in and then get hit with ten percent in the end. That, that's not the way I wanted to present the budget to you. So. So this page right here, it's page thirty-three. It's a year-by-year comparison. The column on the left has greens and reds. That's the state appropriation that they have given the Bangor High. And you can see we're in a heck of a, heck of a run from two thousand eighteen to present. State's been very nice to the city of Bangor and the school department. And the column on the right, that's the amount that we would need to raise to taxpayers to fund the budget as it's put together. And I want to point out, over the last two years, there was no increase to the taxpayers because we came in flat, and we've told people right up front, please enjoy this because we have some changes coming, and we won't be able to do it a third year, and here we are. So that's where the, right now, that's the three point one five six million dollars that I referred to several times tonight already. That is the increase if the budget was passed as presented. That's what the, we would be asking the citizens to fund an increase. And I did my crazy math, and I believe the one point three five six million is about a dollar thirty on the mill rate, which is also a big number. So. And you can see the, I have a couple graphs. This is a state subsidy, and like I said, since two thousand eighteen, it's really gone up. Nice little projection there, going straight up, no leveling off. And let's hope it continues that way. And this is the percentage of the total budget. And right behind my illustrated, the title there is a dip this year. It went, was going up, and because our budget went up, the percentage of the state support compared to the overall budget has gone down. And a couple pie graphs. And basically, for those who are visual, compares fiscal twenty-three to fiscal twenty-four. It takes the state categories. And you can see, if I just do it quickly, there isn't a lot of changes. Our facilities obviously went up, and special education went up, and regular education went up. But not a lot of movement within the pie graph itself. And that is a very quick overview of the draft budget. Hopefully, I trued my word and didn't ramble on too long for you. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We are looking for feedback from you folks today. Do we have it right? Do we have it wrong? What is your vision for the budget? So we can take those ideas back and make changes if necessary. And the next time, I'm not sure if there will be a workshop, but the next, I think that...
I, I have proposed for us to have a workshop.
So the next time, there'll be a workshop. But the next time that I'll stand before you like this will be what we call the first reading. And hopefully, by then, we've gotten a budget right, and everybody will be sort of on board with whatever number we come up with. So that is, I believe, two weeks from tonight, and then three weeks from tonight would be the second reading. And we are obligated to present a budget to the city of Bangor. I believe it's April twelfth, right in there. So we want to make sure we hit that deadline as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions right now that you may have. Or please send them an email to me, to Superintendent Tager, so we can prepare for any workshop and do the legwork and have it ready for you instead of trying to react on the fly. It'd be much better to have those questions where I could do some research and give some meaningful answers.
Thank you for a great presentation. Any questions for today, at least? Member Mendel.
Yeah, thank you for that. I haven't had a chance to look at the budget other than what you did just now, so thank you for that. Just a real quick question. How hard would it be to parse out the numbers, thinking about extracurricular spending by activity? Is that categorized in a way that you could break those numbers out?
I could definitely do the best I could. Obviously, each extracurricular activity goes into it. I'm not sure of the labeling when it comes in on an invoice or something of that nature, but I could certainly look into it and see what I could come up with. So it's the extracurricular that you're looking for?
Yeah, just the different categories of extracurriculars and how much we're spending on each. I know there's been some discussion about funding equity among the different activities, and it would just be interesting to have a look at those numbers.
I will do the best I can.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sprague.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you for all the work that you and everybody else has put in it. I know there's a lot of pressures. Predigniated contracts for salaries and benefits, not a lot of wiggle room there. Energy costs, utility costs, not a lot of wiggle room there. Inflation for general costs has been up a lot over the last couple of years. To me, three point one million dollar increase is a lot. It doesn't pass straight face test for me. It seems like too much. I think people know I'm very pro-education, but that's a big increase. An over a dollar on the mill rate just on the school side in one year is a lot because the city's probably going to have their own increases on their side, too. A dollar twenty on the mill rates, a couple hundred dollars at least for the average homeowner in Bangor, which is a lot for a lot of homeowners to, to bear. And like it or not, we're in a competitive atmosphere with neighboring communities, several of whom have lower mill rates than us. It is something that families and homeowners look at when they decide where they're going to live. We cannot be too far astray from other communities. The challenge, of course, I'm preaching to the choir here, but how do you have the best school system to make the school system a draw while also having a mill rate that doesn't price people out? Very big challenge. We're all on the same side of that question. But in my opinion, three point one million is a big increase. I would like to see it come down from there without sacrificing anything.
Of course.
You know what I'm saying? But that's just my immediate reaction, all right?
Yes.
I appreciate all the work that's in it, but that's why, that's how I feel about it at first glance.
Do you have a number that interests you?
Well, no, not without being facetious about it. But I, I, I get the challenges. Staff costs, utility costs, general inflation is big pressures. You know, maybe on the mill rate, there's, there's a valuation bump that sort of, I hate to say it, but sort of papers over. And maybe the mill rate doesn't increase as much, even though... Maybe the mill rate doesn't increase as much even though people's dollars out are going out a bit. I, going up a bit. Valuations will also be up. But I think if we come to the city with this, the city council is very pro-education. They're probably going to support a budget that we approve ourselves and bring forward. We're all pro-education. But there are property taxpayers who struggle in this community. And it's not, it's not a knock on them to say, you got to deal with this because we pro-education, we want the best budget possible. It's, it's not fair to some property taxpayers who are struggling to, I don't want to frame people as anti-education for not supporting a bigger increase, but that's just a big jump. It's the biggest jump by far in this whole list. It's like almost double the amount of any jump in the last ten to fifteen years. And I just think that we have to fine-tune this a little bit and find some savings somewhere.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I will get to you, Member Sorg, but I have to respectfully disagree. I think it is a big jump, but I also think that we need to remain competitive. But if it's about salaries and if it's about the utilities, we're kind of, you know, in a predicament right now. I think sometimes there's a misconception that we need to keep, you know, the budget, you know, how we've kept it over the years where we have community members who have said, we need to continue to keep the best educators and the best teachers. And I think the salaries infringes and, you know, that, that speaks volumes. And I think we need to remain competitive. And if this is, you know, I'm a taxpayer too and I, I, it's something that we need to keep, you know, mindful of if we can, if we can bring it down. But I would hate to sacrifice anyone's salary or, you know, and just remain, again, extremely competitive. So that's my take. Member Sorg.
Thank you. As a retired teacher and as a retired senior citizen in Bangor, I would respectfully agree with Mr. Sprague. Three point one million is a huge pill to swallow for many of the people who live and work in Bangor. The average salary in Bangor is less than forty-five thousand a year. That's a five-figure number. Very few, I would say, less than ten percent in our community make a six-figure number a year. I'm for quality education. I've been in education for over thirty-five, forty years now. I just find that three point one million a very difficult pill to swallow. I think we can do better and I'd like to see you try to do better. Bring it down below fifty-seven, fifty-six, five, to see what you can do. I realize we can't swallow, we can't handle what utilities are doing to us because it's happening to everybody in the community. My electric bill went up forty, forty-five dollars and I'm going, why? Where's the service? I don't see it. Oil bill, same thing this year. I think we can, we just have to stop and think and look at the budget and what can we really do but still maintain quality here in Bangor?
Member Jandro.
So I'm going to support and second what I'm hearing from Marwa. Well, I obviously am a taxpayer in the city of Bangor as well. I think that we do want to remain competitive for our teachers. But what, when we think about a two-year budget in the past two years where we've had almost zero increase in expenditure for the schools, considering extra funds that may have come through because of COVID relief and other things that we've really benefited from, had we spread this out over two years, it would have been just like kind of your par for the course. It's going to be harder to swallow because it's one big increase after a little bit of a year of break. And correct me if I'm wrong, you did say this was kind of something that had been mentioned in the past, right? That this big bump was going to come. So when we're thinking about trimming the budget based on elements we can't control, you can't, as much as we would love to, control the cost of health insurance as it goes up. We can't control that. We can't control natural gas. We can't control the electric bills. That's at a level that we can't operate in. We then start to say, well, what are we going to sacrifice? We all know to, Member Mandell's question earlier about extracurriculars, in the past, that meant a slicing of the arts and music in favor of other elements that might bring in greater revenue. And so when we are thinking about how we allocate funds, I want to treat all of our teachers the way they deserve to be treated with the pay increases that do match inflation, that want to keep them in our district, that keep them and their families in our district with their students here because they are here as well because we have a good school department. So it's a big pill to swallow, agree. Where do you trim the funds without sacrificing key programs? That, and for me, it's a caveat here, I grew up as an arts and music kid. That is a lifeline for a lot of students in terms of their mental health and well-being. I would hate to see any of those programs cut. I would guess that most of my fellow committee members would hate to see any cuts to special education, special needs children who are in the community. Has had, we've had a jump in that population as well. We're not going to sacrifice those services. So when we're looking at trimming the numbers, maybe yes, we can find a few pennies that we can pinch here and there. But I'm going to guess it's not going to be all that much unless we have a windfall of insurance not going up more than four or five percent this year. Fingers crossed that's the way it works out. But I think we give a fair shake and see what the final budget comes out to. But we're going to be really, really careful when we decide what to cut in order to save that money.
Member Saret.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, Jerry, for the, for all the work and a good presentation. At this point, I just, I had a question about something you mentioned at the end and Member Sprague brought it up, the mill rate. You said something along the lines of your crazy math. And can you walk me through what that math is in terms of a three, three point one five million dollar increase? What that would translate to in terms of a mill rate increase? And what that mill rate increase would due to, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars, you know, property taxpayer?
Sure. The way it was presented to me and what I've remembered, and we would have to check with the city to make sure it hasn't changed. What I was told was for every hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it was a nickel. So if you divide the increase by a hundred and twenty thousand and multiply by five cents, you now have your mill rate change. That's how I came up with the increase. So if my hundred and twenty thousand per, equals a nickel, is still relevant, then that's how it works. So that's how the, sort of the crazy math.
And what would, what would that translate to? Let's say a property tax, let's say a home value of two hundred thousand dollars.
So you would take that dollar thirty and say you have a hundred, a three hundred thousand dollar house. So you, it's, you multiply a dollar thirty by three hundred. So for every thousand dollars of appraisal, you're going to see an additional dollar thirty. So I don't have a calculator in front of me, but that's-
So it'd be a three hundred, so on a three hundred thousand, that would be a three hundred and thirty dollar increase in their property taxes.
I don't, I'll trust your math.
Yeah. And that three hundred and thirty dollars would be for the entire year. So their tax bill, their tax burden would increase by three hundred and thirty dollars spread out over a twelve-month year.
And, and that's for a three hundred thousand dollar home, right?
Right.
I, I just, I think that kind of information, if possible, if we have a budget workshop, would be really helpful. Some type of table that shows as we go up, what impact does it have on a-
Because when you look at it that way, correct.
Three hundred thousand dollar home, something along those lines.
Member Sprague, you're on the city side. Did I, did I say the-
I think you got it.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the other thing that, that I mentioned, too, is that the school committee side of the budget has an increase and the city side of the budget will have an increase. So it's like twenty-two or so. If you increase both, you're going to have property tax increases of, you know, pulling numbers out of the hat for the median homeowner, probably six or seven hundred dollars on average, which is a lot for people.
Right. Thank you. Yep. All right.
You know, and I would like us to consider as well, and, you know, not to bring this up again, but the money that we have returned to the city as well. I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well.
I think, go ahead. I think with the workshop, I think that's good, but it will likely be on the twenty-second, the day of the first reading. So any questions that you have, if you would send those to Jerry and I both, we'll respond to you over the next couple of weeks, too.
And instead of just presenting numbers, what I'll do is present scenarios for that workshop. And if it's on the same day, I'll have to incorporate it into a first reading. I won't have a choice. But, but obviously, the given take had, will not have taken place. So take that with a grain of salt.
Is there any way we can have that workshop prior to the-
We could, we could.
That would give me-
I could send out some dates tomorrow, see if everybody's in agreement.
It, it does take a few days to-
So it'd be at least, at least a week out, probably. Yeah.
Member Sprague.
Even though we have a separate mission than the city side of things, it would be helpful to get a feel for what their budget's going to look like, too, because there's a little bit of given pull. Maybe, maybe they're more attractive this year, which would help us to take a little bit more of the burden in, maybe not, I'm probably too optimistic. But it would also be helpful if we could kind of take the temperature on other school districts, both comparative, other service center communities around the state, but also in our geographic area. Because I actually, even though I said, you know, our mill rate is higher than some other communities, we are actually on par or lower than Brewer or Orno comparative communities around here. And actually, budget-wise, because we have been somewhat conservative over the last seven or eight years, even though our utilities, maintenance costs are up, there are other school districts that are going up even more because they've deferred so much maintenance. So we actually, because of some strategic budgeting in the past, are actually in a comparatively better place than some school districts around. I think that you'll start to see the headlines of some of these other school districts that have really been somewhat artificially keeping their mill rates low, jumping up even more. It just provides some more data points and some context for what we're talking about here. If you have any relationships or that you could kind of get a feel for what other school districts are experiencing right now, because undoubtedly, they're experiencing the same things as us.
They are.
Staff costs, utility costs, maintenance, inflation, big levers. And probably even more on deferred maintenance because there's school districts that have been papering over problems.
Right. I am part of a group that, folks like myself in this area, so I'll reach out. And usually, we're all willing to share because in the end, everything's public information anyway.
Great. Other questions, comments, Member Mandell?
Yeah, I, I want to piggyback on what Member Hassan and Member Jandro said. I think, I won't reiterate it because you all said it pretty well. But one thing I wanted to add is that we are competing for teachers. I think we have the best teachers anywhere around and we want to keep them. And we did go through a negotiations process where we ended up knowing that this was going to happen, that we were going to have this increase. And I think it's worth it. I also think we're, you know, we're competing for students as well. And we're not just competing for the students who want, you know, a four million dollar or a half a million dollar scoreboard. We're competing for students who want good arts, good STEM, good humanities. And I think we need to, you know, not now, but at some point, I would like to look at the tuition students that, that we have lost to other districts, if, if we have that data available. Maybe look at why we're losing them. I just have some anecdotal stories about kids who've gone to other schools because they weren't getting what they wanted at Bangor. So if we could look at that, because that's money, too, that we're losing. So just as a long-term idea.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so moving on to report of retirements.
Thank you. I'm reporting the following retirements for the end of the school year 2022, 2023. Catherine Collins, grade three teacher, Downey School. Denise Semenu, grade six teacher, James F. Dowdy School.
Thank you. Next, we have report of resignations. Oh, it's under informational items.
Okay, okay.
Do you want?
No, I guess we're okay. Sorry about that.
No worries. So report of resignations.
Yes, I'm reporting the following resignation. Daniel Baker, special education teacher, Bangor Regional Program.
Thank you. On to business action items. We have the first action item, which is the regular meeting of February fifteenth, 2023.
Thank you. I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the February fifteenth, 2023 regular school committee meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Next, we have personnel and we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for school year 2022, 2023. Michael Corneal, assistant coach varsity softball, Bangor High School. Isaac Bushway, B baseball coach, William S. Cohen School.
Motion, please. Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes, seven, zero. Thank you.
Next, we have a second reading of policies. We have revised policy ICA 2023, 2024 school calendar.
I'm recommending approval of the second reading of a policy revised, policy ICA 2023, 2024 school calendar.
Member Luciana, did you have a question?
I did, about the calendar. I hope that's all right.
We, we need a motion first. Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Second, sir.
Question.
Thank you. Um, I feel kind of silly asking this. I noticed on this one and on this current year and in this upcoming year, there's no spring conferences? Only fall conferences? And I was curious if that was intentional?
I don't think that's intentional.
Let me see something. Are you talking about the teacher in service? It is there for March, March fifteenth.
I'm not recalling correctly that there, have there been spring conferences in the past? Yes. No.
Oh, no.
Really?
We do have the in-service, the teacher in-service.
Why do we only have, okay. All right, well, that, we may want to address that. That may not have, how do you have an output with only input? That's all. Just, you need to have circuit, got to close that circuit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just surprised to see that.
Any other questions about the calendar? All in favor?
Passes, seven, zero. Thank you.
Next, we have donations. And I believe it is Member Jandro today. We will share those.
All right, to the William S. Cohen School from Beth and Art Coetridis, a cash donation to support students during the winter months, having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty dollars. And to Bangor High School from the University of Maine, a splash drone for, having a total dollar value of two thousand five hundred dollars. We thank you very much.
Thank you so, so much. Motion, please? Any questions? Member Mandell, you're going to ask what a splash drone was?
It is a splash drone.
That was my question, too.
I wish I knew. All I know is the brightest science and tech, and engineering mind I know was very excited about it. Dr. Stewart told me about it, had an in, had an overture from someone that wished to donate the equipment to us and she reported it with excitement. So I pass it on to you and as soon as I know, you'll know.
We need a full report, please.
A demonstration.
A demonstration, yes. All in favor?
Passes, seven, zero.
Yes, with gratitude. And then we move on to introduction items. We have a first reading of policy, revised policy JJIF, management of concussions and other head injuries in school-sponsored extracurricular activities.
I'm recommending approval of the first reading of the revised policy, revised policy JJIF, management of concussions and other head injuries in school-sponsored extracurricular activities.
Motion, please? Any questions about that one? Now, and many thanks to Kathy and Sue and Claire for your work on this. We appreciate it. All in favor?
Passes, seven, zero. Thank you.
Moving on to committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Member Saret.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to-
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to bring the committee up to speed on a piece of legislation that might be of interest. And I'll give you a little bit of background context. I met with Superintendent Tager and Senator Joe Baldacci a few months ago just to talk about legislative priorities. And we had a good discussion about funding inequities and really about distribution of funds to PK-12 schools throughout Maine. And one of the ongoing inequities and challenges with distribution of school funding is that very wealthy communities, wealthy communities in Maine typically spend several thousand more per student than moderate and low-income communities. Which, you know, if I had my way, it would be the opposite, right? It would be the, the wealthy communities would spend less per pupil and the, the low and medium, moderate income would spend more per pupil. But that's just me. I won't go down that road. But anyway, Senator Baldacci has put some legislation in. It's titled LR1180, and I'll have to read the title because it's quite lengthy. An Act to Better Support the Educational Attainment of Low and Moderate-Income Communities by Providing Additional Funding to Certain School Administrative Units. And just in a nutshell, what it will do is create a twenty-five million dollar pot of money in Augusta housed within the Department of Education that school communities in low and moderate income, low and moderate income school communities can apply for grants to help offset some of those differences in per pupil spending. So it will be, have legislative hearings later in March is what Senator Baldacci has mentioned. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, thank you for that, too. We did have a very good meeting with Senator Baldacci and I think you're, you're being a little modest, but it was, it was your idea. And I think the fact that he took it and ran with it is really, says, speaks well for our school committee. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Member Mundell.
Question about that. Is that something that we could vote on as a committee to maybe provide testimony or in support?
I think that we may get to that point. We're, we're waiting for the next steps. And I think it was great that Members brought it up today. But I think that is something that we could probably show our support to. You all could as a school committee.
Yeah. I think, correct me if I'm mistaken, Members Saret, but I think we could potentially give testimony if this kind of goes through, correct? And we can pull on.
Any citizen of Maine can give testimony, absolutely.
So the testimony from the school committee members would be phenomenal.
My understanding, though, is that we couldn't represent ourselves as school committee members if we were to testify. Is that, or, I mean, or we can't represent?
We could submit written, possibly. Written testimony, possibly, as a committee. I'm not sure.
I think it would just be, if we could do it as a committee, I think it would be very powerful.
I think that'd be great.
I don't think that there is, there are issues with that, so definitely.
We could have another conversation with the senator as it moves forward.
Other questions or comments? Member Mundell.
Are we doing committee updates? Or not yet? Sorry. Okay.
If, if we have no other comments or questions, yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to that.
Yeah, the mental health committee was canceled because of the snowstorm. So we finally got another date. We're gonna meet, meet March twenty-third at three fifteen. We're still looking for student members. So, Mr. Butler, if you have any ideas for us, I, I emailed Dr. Leach the other day. We would love to have two, two school members if we could.
Thank you. Other representatives' reports. Member John Dro.
Yes, the UTC board met last week. That was last week, right? It's been a long week. And just a few things to report out there. From a staffing perspective, they're looking at hiring a full-time ed tech and a combined safety slash IT personnel as they look to grow their services and have those onboard. They're, they're finding a need for a full-time ed tech to support the academic side of things for their students that are attending school there. And from a fun report out, they had a student who made his way down to New York City to take photographs of, I wasn't sure if it was a friend or a family member during New York Fashion Week and has currently got his imagery up on a billboard in Times Square. So there was a celebration of those achievements. And I did go ahead and find the posting on their Facebook page and it's some great photography. So if you want to find it, it is available on their public-facing Facebook page. But the, the student looks quite proud of himself standing in the center of Times Square with his imagery right overhead. And it, it's not small. It's a very bright, beautiful image. And they're very proud of the work that he's done.
Our committee reports? And the DEIB Advisory Committee will be meeting on April sixth again. We will be resuming the two subcommittees, recruitment, retention, and also a report out of the equity audit. I believe Principal Bannon and Professor Metta will be sharing results from that. So we're excited to, to get an update from the equity audit and move forward from there. In student committee member updates, Member Sada.
Okay, I have three events I want to bring your attention to, so get your calendars out. Earlier today, there was a unified basketball game at the high school. I was not able to attend, but I talked with several students and teachers who were going to attend and I hope they got a good turnout. But if you miss today's, there will be another one next Wednesday on the fifteenth at Brewer High School at 5:00 PM. And they're doing a fill the gym challenge, so they want as many people there to support the teams as possible. In addition, on Saturday, March eighteenth, there will be a craft fair at the BHS Gym. There's a two-dollar door charge or you can bring in five canned goods. And you will be able to buy from student crafters and I think a few staff crafters and other people in the communities who have volunteered to come in. It will take place from ten to two. And from what I've heard, there's about thirty-five vendors so far, which is great. And of course, there is the Bangor High School showcase coming up on March thirtieth. The Humanities Academy is actually hosting a spaghetti dinner an hour before the showcase starts, which is a great way, if you want a convenient meal before attending the open house. The academy is raising money for the trip to Spain and Portugal. So any money raised there will go to that trip. And there will be a silent auction as well for fundraising, where many local businesses have already given a lot of donations and items for the silent auction. So we encourage everyone to attend that. And the showcase will officially start at 7:00 PM. And there will also be time to learn about academies and teachers are there and classes are already starting to put together projects to showcase. And it's going to be really fun. This is, it's been a few years since we've had a grand showcase. So hopefully, a lot of community members will engage with it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On to information items, we have a few important dates. Wednesday, March twenty-second, 2023 is our next regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Wednesday, April twelfth, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. And then our next retreat is on Tuesday, May twenty-third, 2023, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty in Camp Jordan. Final call for questions and comments. Member Sorg.
Yes, one thing we forgot to mention about UTC, their Skills USA competition is March seventeenth at the UTC out on Hogan Road from eight until about 1:00 PM. It's fantastic. If you haven't been, you gotta go. It's, it's just a terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Well, and I just wanted to quickly say that this month is Women's History Month and today is International Women's Day. So happy Women's Day to all, all my female colleagues here. And, you know, I didn't get a chance to speak earlier when the team was here, but I, you know, I didn't want to take anything away from Coach Mosca, but he spoke so eloquently about his team. They're just phenomenal. I can speak, you know, from firsthand experience that that group of young women, they're, they're absolutely amazing, drama-free. They really support and uplift one another. It's just amazing to see that, the camaraderie, the sportsmanship. And I think it's really telling of a wonderful program and wonderful coaches. Coach Mosca is extremely humble, but he was PVC Coach of the Year. He just, he really kind of uplifts the, the team. And I think, again, having that three-peat speaks, speaks volumes. I think it's very telling of a, again, an excellent program, an excellent culture, and excellent coaches. So congratulations to all of them. And with that, adjournment. Can I get a motion, please? All in favor?
Passes seven, zero.